Says that we are live. I think we're good. Can you hear the sound? Can you hear sound testing? Testing? We're good?
Okay.
All right. I am going to call our regular meeting of council to order at 6:01 PM. And I will start with our land evaluation statement. The town of Culvers is located on Blackfoot, Confederacy Territory. We honor the Blackfoot people and their traditional ways of knowing and hearing this land, as well as all indigenous peoples who have helped shape and continue to strengthen our community. So now we're going to move into the adoption of the agenda. And we have had a couple of items that have come forward for some amendments here. And so I do have a request from councillor Ackerman's to add six I, which is the request to attend the Economic Development Alberta Leaders Summit. Okay? And then I do have a request from Deputy Mayor Potry and councillor Caldwell to add six J, the appointment of a member-at-large for Recreation and Culture Committee to the agenda. And a request from CAO to insert council reports at Agenda Item Eight. And then a request from councillor Florence to add eight A donation to Partnership Association for Literacy PAL to the agenda. And so with that, can I get a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Great, thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call the favor or call the favor. Call the question, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. So now we will move on to the adoption of the previous minutes from our meeting on January 3rd. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
I would like to approve those minutes.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? That's carried. And just moving down the agenda here, we don't have any citizens without formal notice today, so we'll move right on to the business of council. Our first item here being the second reading of bylaw 442-23, which is the amendment of the utility bylaw, which is 424-21. And I'm going to turn this over to councillor Florence.
Thank you. So with the bylaw, this is essentially putting into writing into our second reading what we discussed and agreed upon. So this is another tool for admin and for the town to be able to collect the Alberta utilities by adding it to the homeworks tax rule. So again, I'm very pleased with the direction this is going, in case of the recommendation from admin. This will free us staff time as we move forward and should wake up to the way things have been in the past. Very pleased to see this kind of organizational efficiencies being made. So with that, I move that we do the second reading of bylaw 442-23 and then into the utility bylaw to transfer outstanding utility bills, bill balances to taxation.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If there is none, I will call the question, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. Now with that, we will move on to the third reading of the same bylaws, so 442-23 amendment to the utility bylaw. Would anyone like to make this motion?
Okay. I move that Iowa 442-23 amendment to the utility bylaw 424-21. You give a third reading.
Right, any discussion? If there is none, I'll call the question, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Moving on here, we have the second reading of bylaw 443-23, the amendment to the procedural bylaw 422-21. And councillor Florence, we'll go to you again.
Thank you. So again, super pleased with these changes. It's about aligning the policies with the practices we are doing. The procedural bylaw is a very important and very in-depth document that guides our meetings and our procedures for council. So I would like to state that this is a living and breathing document. So making little changes to improve efficiencies and align with best practices really makes me happy and also knowing that this is something we can, again, grow and change as we continue to grow and adapt best practices and align our policies and as we strive to meet towards our big governance goals on the strategic plan. So I move that we do the second reading of bylaw 443-23, amendment to the procedural bylaw 422-21, changing authority and then recording opposing votes in the minutes.
Well, thank you. Any discussion on this item? If there's none, I'll call the question, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. And then again, we will move on to the third reading of bylaw 443-23, amendment to the procedural bylaw. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make the third reading.
So, go ahead.
I'll move that we give third reading to bylaw 443-23, an amendment to the procedural bylaw 422-21. That bylaw is changing the authority and recording opposing votes in the minutes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? That's carried. So now we'll move on to the last bylaw reading that we have tonight, which is the second reading of bylaw 441-23, a bylaw to revise the rates and fees bylaw. And councillor Ackerman's?
Yeah, thank you from there. Just a quick summary of what this one's about. We had a typographical error in the fees and rates bylaw. It had incorrectly listed the room and kitchen per day value, or rental rate, and then the room and kitchen per session rental rate, they were reversed, so the per session rate should be, I don't know, eleven dollars and the per kitchen be two hundred and forty-six dollars. This just directs side issues, so the proper answer there.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor? That's carried. And then moving on to the third reading of bylaw 441-23, a bylaw to revise the rates and fees bylaw. Would somebody like to make that motion?
Sure. I move that a third reading be given to bylaw 441-23, a bylaw to revise the rates and fees bylaw, which is 439-21.
Excellent, any discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? That is carried. So now we're going to move on to the council remuneration policy. And councillor Ackerman, did you see that you have those motions?
Yeah. I move that council refer the matter relating to the council remuneration to the policy bylaw to a committee. Let committee return to council with the recommendation no later than May 2nd, 2023.
Any discussion? If there's none, call the question, all in favor? That is carried. All right, and now so we're going to move on here to the next one we have here, which is eight, which is the request to attend the South Pro event. And so this is coming from councillor Ackerman. So councillor Ackerman, can you tell us a little bit about this event?
Yeah. Thank you. So this is an event that South Pro and Alberta Southwest are currently together to meet with Invest Alberta. They're sending a delegation to Calgary to meet with them. The intent of the event is to build relationships directly between members of South Pro and people at Invest Alberta, wherever investment in the province. Historically, solid relationships with groups like Invest Alberta have led to investment coming toward the region. This event will involve us being a lot full of South Pro representatives along with some Alberta Southwest representatives, elected officials and some economic development staff from the region. Heading to Calgary where a workshop on community investment attraction is a preview to regional investment attraction projects for the South Pro and Alberta Southwest areas to take place. This is a chance not only to network with Invest Alberta, but Calgary Economic Development, Prairies Canada, the government of Alberta staff, travel of Alberta, among others. And I'm hoping that you'll support me to attend this event and represent all of Culvers, both the region, and see what we can do to provide that voice to bring some of the investment into the province down the way.
Great, thank you. I will move that council approve councillor Ackerman to attend the Invest Alberta workshop in Calgary on January 26, 2023. And I will open that up for any discussion. If there is none, I will call the question, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Then the next point that we have here is the request to attend the Economic Development Alberta Leaders Summit. Councillor Ackerman, can you again give a little bit of information about that?
No, for sure. So historically, South Pro has sent some money to send some of the executive to the Economic Development Alberta Leaders Summit. This year, there's three people that have expressed interest in it, so they're asking for the municipalities to chip in a little bit. The ask this year is if the municipalities will cover the registration fee, which is $675,000 for the early bird pricing, which is good until the end of the month, I believe, that they will cover the hotels and travel expenses for that. There is food included with the convention, so that's not an issue there. I had a chance to attend this conference last year, and I felt like it was a wealth of information. There were different individual seminars on various topics where you had different breakout rooms where you wanted to go to. There were panels and keynote speakers. When we were doing the panels, they were literally getting people out of their chair and what people were sitting in there. So I felt like it was a great earning opportunity. Some of the highlights from last year, there was a presentation by Digital Green Street on how they can support local businesses with their online presence. There was also panel discussions about diversification of the economy. So they're looking at different kinds of proteins and different things that are in the area that could help spread us a little from this oil and gas. There were panel discussions also about addressing worker shortages and how some of the different municipalities are overcoming those. So they might not have had like a direct to Culvers help, but it's ideas that we can bring forward when these things come up. Yeah, I thought that it was a great conference. The learning potential there is huge. There is tons of allocated opportunities. It was elected officials, it was economic development officers, it's people of the industry. I know one of the guys I spoke to last year was looking at possibly doing a project at one of the schools. And they're looking for a school of us to look at, so it's like, I have that connection. And I think they're looking at putting some technology in there. So they're having brief conversations about how that might open up possibilities. I don't know what the lineup or anything of that matter is this year. There's probably going to be a wealth of people from different industries and everything. But I'm hoping that you guys would support me in going there, taking that learning opportunity, bring some back to town.
Great, thank you. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Can I introduce this great other person?
Absolutely, thank you. I move that councillor, or that council approve councillor Ackerman's attendance at the Economic Development Alberta Leaders Summit and Conference in Caninascas from April 12 to April 14, 2023.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Go ahead.
I just wanted to bring up one thing, and that's just in regards to conversations that we've had at council about training and what the budget would look like that and setting parameters around that. We haven't had a chance to have that conversation yet. So I just wanted to bring it up as a point, if that's something that we want to look at. I do think this is a good opportunity. I also wanted to mention that the digital squad is actually through Community Futures. So some of that stuff we do have access to already. And so yeah, I just wanted to bring it up.
Can I ask, seeing how, do we, with the way that we get the budget and then recruit the budget this year, did we actually look at what our professional development would look like for each councillor? I can't remember how we addressed that.
So I'm going to move down the line here to corporate services. In the, yes, there's a certain option there for professional development slash travel expense. Currently for the year, excuse me, it's fifteen thousand. That includes eight thousand set aside for registrations and accommodations and travel for the Alberta Municipalities Conference Convention. That's about eight thousand of that, give or take a little bit. And then the rest of seven thousand is split up. It's a full pot, but it can be used in different ways. It's semi-allocated to being one thousand two hundred and fifty per council or two thousand for the mayor. But it's an overall pot, it's not actually set to each individual member of council. So it's a bit of managing that pot overall. But that's kind of the breakdown to make that seven thousand dollar figure.
Excellent, thank you for that information. I think for this, I think it sounds like a great opportunity. I would love for you to bring back information, of course, as you did last year, and to just share more about, you know, what you learned and how that can be applied here. And some of those learnings, and I did, we did that last year, so I think that would be excellent. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor? That's carried, thank you very much. So the next item that we have here is the to appoint the member-at-large to the Recreation and Culture Committee. We did receive an application for this that I believe might have caught him filtered.
Absolutely, thank you, we're sure, yes. During transition between CAOs, it actually got hung up in Maine and unfortunately ended up being overlooked. That's on my plate. So Ms. Deel had expressed an interest in being a member-at-large for the Recreation and Culture Committee. And because she was the only one who had responded to the call-out in September, not only that, but because she's also volunteered to step forward, the recommendation is coming forward that should be appointed. Or the ask, the request is coming forward, council should be appointed as a member-at-large for the Recreation and Culture Committee. With her appointment starting immediately, and then as for policy, her appointment would actually end at the next organizational meeting. There's no limit on terms, so she could be reappointed at that time.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I move that council appoint Ms. Deel as a member-at-large for the Recreation and Culture Committee, with her appointment commencing immediately at her term ending October 7, 2023.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I guess for me, like, just the discussion, I think that Ms. Deel has been incredible in our community. And I think that this is a great opportunity to have her be part of this, because I think that she has contributed so much, and I look forward to seeing what she can and will contribute to this committee.
Absolutely.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question, all in favor? That's carried, thank you very much. So we're going to move down now to the CAO request for decisions. So we do have on the agenda today debentures. And at our previously, one of our, not long ago, we had our Director of Corporate Services did provide us with a presentation on the debentures. And of course, you'll see in your agenda packages, all of the information there. And so just to get it started, I'm going to just turn it over to you. And if there's anything that you would like to update us on, and then we can look at some motions or go into debate, do whatever we need to do.
Thank you. So this is just, yeah, coming back from, yeah, whenever it was, December, November? Can't remember anymore. But this is from the idea that we have some debentures that are funding what were long-term projects, or all long-term projects, to finance them in a review of what our debentures look like, to look at them and say, hey, you know what, some of these are, we could pay some of these off ahead of time, free-up some funds. Some of them are from, you know, nearly twenty years ago, when the context of the town is a very different situation. Great idea to pull a debenture out this time for those projects. We're in a different situation now where we can handle that differently. So the chart that's on here is updated. I initially reached out to them for about one, to the province about the local loans, the debentures. I reached out to them, and they provided me information for one. I thought, hey, let's find out for all of them. Took a while to get the information from them, that's what's in front of you. However, these numbers change day to day. So these are very, they'll be very close approximations, but they will not be the exact numbers until if we were to go ahead and pay some of that, we'd have to get that number from them for that exact day and do it at that point. So, but they would be roughly around these figures. One of the questions that came up at the last meeting was regarding the, there was one debenture that was taken down to purchase some land, the land is then sold. Proceeds are kind of just sitting there. And one of the questions was, hey, if this is generating interest, what does that look like? Is it better to keep it and keep paying the debenture, or does it take care of itself? What does this look like? So I pulled some information together and got that whatever the sale amount was, the payment amount, the interest that that money has generated over the last four, five years, and then what interest has been paid out. So over that five-year period from 2018 to 2022, it had generated approximately a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of interest. The interest paid for 2018, 2022 was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and a difference of sixty-two thousand dollars in each of those years. If you take it, in 2018, it generated twenty-five-ish thousand. Twenty nineteen was twenty-seven thousand. Twenty twenty generated forty-eight hundred dollars. Twenty twenty-one was sixteen thousand. And twenty twenty-two was thirty-eight thousand dollars. So it was kind of an all-over range, but we've seen that in the interest rates having changed to help to inflation affects this. The way it works is through our bank, they have their prime rate, and then we earn interest at their prime rate minus a certain figure, depending on the balance that is in the bank account. So on average, it was generating about twenty-two thousand dollars of interest per year, and which was less than what we were paying out in interest. With debentures though, you pay a principal amount and a interest amount. And each year, it's the actual dollar amount of payment that we make is the same amount every single year, but the makeup of that payment changes with principal and interest over each semi-annual payment. And so each year, the interest that we're paying is going down, the principal's going up. But I pulled to see, okay, but what year do we start breaking even on this? And so it's a little, it's tough to get an exact amount on this, because we don't know what the interest rates will be like in the future. But so I did a quick calculation. If the interest rates stayed the same, that meaning that the prime rate stayed the same for the next couple of years, we wouldn't start breaking even on how much interest we're paying and how much interest we're earning until late 2024. And that's if, that's again, if the rates stay the exact same. I think, I can't speak for Bank of Canada, but I believe they would hope for those rates to be coming down as years go on. But again, I can't speak for them, I'm calling Ms. Deel herself. So happy to answer any questions regarding that at this time. If there's any clarification you'd be looking for.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You know what, I just want to say thank you for getting that extra information. And that's really what I was looking at is what it was, the difference in the interest rates. I remember when we first started exploring debentures with certain items, it was such an incredibly low rate. And so that's what my concern was, is a payoff at very low rate when we're gaining higher interest as revenue. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? If there's none, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Sure, what motion would you like to make?
I would like to make the motion, the councillor, the CAO, to prepay the remaining balances on the following debentures. And did you want me to read each one?
Yes.
Within there, it's recommended from my Director of Corporate Services. Deventure 400151, waterline payout amount of, do I include the amounts within this motion?
You'll see through you, your worship to councillor Caldwell, it says the amounts are approximates. We do like to have specifics, but if council understands the spirit of this, as of the date of printing of the agenda, this is the approximate, it may be slightly less. If council is okay with that, then you can read the process.
Thank you. So the payout amount of eight one thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and one cent. Deventure 310097, fire hall payout amount, and that is one hundred thousand and sixty-eight dollars seventeen cents. Deventure 400771, large property, payout amount of one hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and sixty-two and sixteen cents. Deventure 4001401, land sewer payout amount of one million two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars of sixty cents. Correct, I apologize, six cents.
Thank you very much.
And I think with that motion, there's also included with funds for prepayment coming from identified reserves and unallocated surplus. And I further move that the CAO present council with options for reallocation of the annual payment amounts of these debentures no later than February 21st, 2023.
Excellent, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Go ahead, councillor Lance.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I very much support paying off these debentures, because I actually believe it's proven to free up debt allocations to use for other projects. I support doing all four as well, as it was the highest ever taken. We know that we need a fire hall expansion, and we know that it's going to cost a lot of money and most likely require another debenture. With the waterline and large property, I would like to see, like, our Director of Corporate Services said, these older projects paid off to make work for their current endeavors. And then with the land, it's just a little bit mind-boggling to me. As we know a little bit of the history, this is where committed egg now sits. So one day, I would maybe love to understand a little bit more of that history as to why, what happened, happened. But I think that, for me, like, one of the things, it's coming from unrestricted account. I'm not a huge fan of unrestricted accounts. But as we move boldly forward, as we are, I think it's proven to be intentional and fix some of these errors and move forward positively. The other part is that we have healthy reserves in Culvers, and that's a point of pride, and it's meant to be used on things like this. So then following the payments, we'll still have healthy reserves, which is also a really good thing. And then as well, I want to say that there were some really great options provided from administration on what to do with the additional funds, and I would look forward to delivering that with council.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just a couple thoughts on this quickly. One of the things that I really like about the idea of paying this off is it sees our value of sustainability from a strategic point. You know, we're talking about leading the future generations to be able to determine their own path forward, and I think this really speaks to that. It also frees up money that would be, I feel personally, would be better used to meet some of our goals of looking to achieve with the strategic plan. So I think this is a win-win situation. I'm excited for this.
And just to add to that, I completely agree with what both of you have said. As I was looking at this, I started, because I was starting to look at the different things. Thank you so much for the information that you did provide. When I was kind of looking at, you know, you had the annual replenishment, did things like that, that was very, very helpful. So I did a little bit of math, and I'm like, okay, this makes a lot of sense in terms of, I think, as you indicated, councillor Ackerman's about, you know, moving forward and what we want to do and the goals we'd like to achieve, as well as, as you had said, councillor Florence, in terms of freeing up some debt so that we can look at some additional projects as we move forward. If there's no further discussion?
Your worship, I can just clarify one piece of information?
Yes.
And it may have just been the fast movement there. We have no unallocated reserves. The prepayment for the debenture regarding land sewer is actually comes from unallocated surplus. Basically, the money was parked for the bank account, and it just sat there. So it wasn't coming from a reserve where we have no identified source for or target for. It just came from the bank account. This theoretically should be the last thing, should be the only thing in there. All of the other reserves that council have are dedicated funds and how it works.
Great, thank you for that, I'm interested.
So if I could just, thank you. It was just, I was just pulling off of the reports and the information I have, but I very much appreciate the clarification, because when I read that, I was like, I have to know.
Thank you. Make that question report, I'm sure it's well.
Great. If there is no further discussion, I will call the question, all in favor? Opposed?
I don't know if we're opposed or not.
You have to choose.
Okay, I'm opposed.
Okay, so in favor, we've got, we've got councillor Caldwell, myself in favor, councillor Florence, and councillor Ackerman, and opposed, councillor, Deputy Mayor Potry, thank you. It is still carried though. That's great, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to, we're going to talk about council reports now. So we'll just again go down the line if there's anything that I would like to update on. I'm going to start with councillor Caldwell today.
So you started the other.
Of course I can, I'm going to start with councillor Ackerman's.
Joy, let me just look here. Since it's January, we had the regular meeting on the third. I think it'll be on that. The only thing that really had come up is the CAO introduced on Tuesday night, or on Saturday. And we had that conversation yesterday besides that. Haven't really had any other committee being answered in about four months, so.
Thank you. Councillor Florence?
Thank you. So for my report, I want to bring up the PAL program, the Program Association for Literacy. That's been operating in Culvers for twenty-nine years. It's been largely spearheaded by many people in our community, but Beth Barclay is one of the main people, Ray Walker, Taffy Kucey. Anyway, they are having a twenty-fifth year anniversary in Culvers on January 26th, and the elementary school is.
and the elementary school is hosting a special day to celebrate. The celebration includes a dress that could be their book character for the day and treats for the whole school. So I reached out to my son Steve, Ms. Lenz, Emma Lenz, who is simply amazing and also a brother in our community and in the school, and asked what town council could do to help with this event. So she got in her touch with the CAO, and she stated that we could send a representative from town council to recognize a important date, as well stated they are looking for a sponsorship for the treats, which I think is awesome. So I would like to bring this up to make sure that we have representation on this date. And then I would also like to make a motion to support the donation of treats, for a donation of treats for that date. So I'll make the motion, and then we can talk about it further.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
I kind of got lost in my notes here. So I think that counsel supports the twenty-fifth anniversary of the partnership for Association for Literacy, the PAL program, by donating a hundred and seventy-five dollars towards the January twenty-sixth celebration with funds coming from the Community Grant Program.
Excellent. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Go ahead.
I think it's great to support the community like this, so thank you for bringing this to our attention. I'll pass it along to my kid.
If there's no further discussion, I have a question. All in favor?
Sorry, I did, I did just want to, with, with this, she had sent this email back that Jeff had split out for us, but it talks about like, if members want to go with that, all members of council are welcome. But if we could decide and then make sure there's somebody there. I don't know if we can do that right now or just kind of decide afterwards, but.
Absolutely. So let's, let's just move forward with the motion, and then we can talk about that. So we made the motion, so a question, all in favor? That's carried. Great, thank you. And so along with this, I thank you for bringing that up and making sure that we're all aware of the mutation. I unfortunately will not be able to attend because I will be away next week. But if, if other members of council are able to attend. Because with this, I guess too, this would be an additional thing where we would have to have a motion to send people as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But do we have to do a motion to send people if it's not like a, like a thing that calls on?
I believe that, that it, I think that we have for all types of community type of events in the past. I believe, but I could be wrong in my incorrect.
You can do it by motion, your worship, or if council just wishes to decide randomly as to who wishes to attend, or members want to keep the calendars open and just vote that date in themselves, you're certainly welcome to do that.
Great. So then if there's no motion, I will just, I can just leave it for people to, to hopefully be able to attend if you're able.
Okay, I would very much like to attend. And then, yeah.
And Paul Jess, did you have more details on that period? Is it during the day time?
Yes, thank you.
We've got other, we've got a thing on our desk. Excellent. Thank you very much for your report. Very great. I'm going to move to W.R. Roetry. All right, I just made sure you were done.
Oh, yeah, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Good.
Yes, so you had a, I think, last couple weeks, I think. The main thing that I've been involved with outside of the council is the ORSC executive meeting, which we had our first kind of meeting of the new year on the Thursday the fourth. At that meeting, we were able to, yeah, set some new rates that we had been, that we had discussed with the general body at the last AGM. So for subdivision applications. So real exciting stuff.
The rates is very exciting.
That's all my thoughts.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I, yeah, we haven't really picked up a lot after Christmas, which is, which is okay. I did attend the subdivision appeal board, speaking on behalf of our MSTA, as well the CAO interviews, which is such an exciting process. I also attended Greenacris Foundation meeting.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, and just a note about that subdivision board. I forgot to mention that because I'm not speaking clearly. We had a draft of the decision, but it hasn't been signed yet, so I can't really say. But I will be reporting to council that once that signed copy has come through. I'm assuming that will probably be sometime this week, because I think we have two weeks from the date to issue the decision that I saw the draft that had come through yesterday. So it's just a few minor tweaks and then we'll talk about it.
Thank you. And for myself, I believe since the last meeting, I attended the Mayors and Reeves meeting, and that was held at the Schnuck Art Regional Library Systems Building, which was excellent. It was a great opportunity for, for the Mayors and Reeves within, within the region to come and see what Schnuck Art is doing for the region. And so I, and we've, we've actually seen, I've been getting a lot of emails, I am on that, on that board, but seeing a lot of emails come in lately about some media that's happening around Schnuck Art. And so there's some really, really great programming that's been happening there. One of the things that, that has come forward is that there actually was an article in the National Post, and this, this was published at the end of December, just really citing the work that is happening at Schnuck Art regarding digital literacy and their impact on that. And another great note too was, I think it was today, that Lisa Weeks from Schnuck Art was, was featured in the global news segment on Alzheimer's awareness kits that are available through the system. And so it's, it's been fantastic to see that they're getting so much uptake. And I guess one of the things is that I, that I would kind of like to say too is that, well, we don't have a physical library within Covert. We are part of this, this system, which allows people to actually access libraries across the region too, for those who are involved in Schnuck Art. And so really great here too is that I happen to be going down, down Main Street one day, and the Book Museum is here on Friday. Go check out the Book Museum on Fridays if you like to the library, because they always have the best stuff there, and they always sell them that. So whenever I see it, I make sure to stop in because I can get books there that are usually on hold for a very long time. And so I'm proud of the work that they are doing and the support that we do have available to us. Regardless, maybe we have a physical library here or not, so it's great to see the work that they are doing.
Wonderful tip. Thank you. Do you have need to share publicly, Phil?
I know. I know, I go run in there every time I see them. I'm like, here, here.
Oh, you're waiting for them to arrive and get on first.
So, so that, that I think has been the big thing that I have, that I've done since then. And I don't think that I've had any other committees besides at this point, so that's my report for now. Okay, so beyond that, we have now, so we, we talked about PAL in your part. That's excellent. Thank you. So now we're going to move on to the administration reports. We have the Director of Operations report in our agenda package here. And since our Director of Operations is not here tonight, I'm gonna just turn, turn over to the CAO. If there's anything that you would like to speak to, or you prefer just questions.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, there is actually one question the Director of Operations has for counsel. If you look at number three, Solar Eight, the wastewater location is not producing electricity. So we rely, we are safely providing into the grid as well. So the DIO would like to know how mayor and council would like to celebrate, recognize, and promote this achievement of counsel.
I would love to have something, something happening there. I think that it, I think it's a really great achievement and something that, I don't know that our community has been necessarily well versed on of what this is and what this is, this whole project. And so I'd love to do something, whether it's a flick in the spit or it's a something that has more of a, a way to celebrate and also to share with our community.
Structure and projects are typically so ribbed and cut, maybe not metaphorical ribbon, ribbon in the most part usually, but. The Director of Operations had actually suggested a, instead of a ribbon cutting, an extension cord.
That's not lucky.
It's not lucky. And it's maybe a surplus.
It'd be a nice opportunity to thank our funders as well, constantly within that celebration.
I think it's a great opportunity to show some of the ways within the community. So it'd be all for, you know, getting a photo of that, whether it be a ribbon cord or whatever, and then providing some awareness to it, maybe your community, I'll put a media post with, in our media. And then if you reach out to some of the regional news outlets, get some publicity going. Right, I think that that would be great.
Excellent.
Okay, I'm just noting in the minutes, the CAO will organize a formal announcement of the completion of the solar project. Date to be determined. Try to pick decent weather, no wind, and not very much.
That sounds great, because it's a lot to us.
So it's in June.
That's great.
Seventh day would probably be different.
Excellent. Is there any, does anyone have any questions above the report? I'll start with Counselor Lawrence, I'll go with Counselor Ackerman.
Okay, so I have two questions. The first one is on the, the water waste. I was just, as I was reading through this, I was noticing that we use less water in 2022 than 2021, and also less wastewater. And I was just slightly curious about the reason, reason for this. I know that we're kind of not in here tonight, but like, I thought maybe it could be with folks using less water as a result of inflation or to get something through their lines, but I thought it was a little bit odd actually that we use less than the previous year.
For your worship to Counselor Florence, yes, and in fact, I had exactly the same question. The speculation is twofold. First, we had slightly different water patterns in a slightly wetter 2022 than we had in 2021. The other thing is people were returning to work, so they weren't at home. Explains the wastewater on the side, like people were taking their waste to other municipalities, shall we say, who probably saw a stark increase as well. So the reality is people just were not spending the time at home, we were back to quote unquote normal. And you can see the impact in something as simple as utility is to how those patterns actually affect what we do in the municipality. The costs then would, according, the company costs then would be lower because of something as simple as that. So we look at, we look at events like COVID, and we think that there's very simple consequences to it. The consequences actually go quite deep, and they go quite to the core of the businesses, at least that we provide, as ministers of governments.
Thank you. That's very interesting.
Did you have an additional question?
I did have another question about number six, the planning for 2023. Because we had that grant done for that really cool testing for the road infrastructure. And I was just wondering what, like how that was being used to decide the projects for this year, or is it still not at the point where it's done to be able to, to use that data to, to decide on the priorities for the project? And just kind of hoping to see some sort of like a plan or something like that, operation wise, that assessment data turned into our plan.
Thank you. Through the Mayor to Counselor Florence, yes. The MAM program that we receive funding for through XCM, technically, the program started, I believe it was September, perhaps the first part of October. We did actually get a deferral on that because we had snow. We wanted to get the vehicle that was running around and doing all those assessments out, but the weather prevented us from doing that. So we're starting as soon as we can in the spring, I would hope by late March, early, late March, early April, for the scanning to be done, roadways, sidewalks, that type of infrastructure. They are pushing still for having the report done by the fall. The moment, they're still striving for early fall, so it would be ambitious, but it should be, it should be doable. The aspect of, of planning for capital projects that's being referred to in item number six is the ongoing work, approvals of counsel, the expansion of the Public Works Building, for example, things of that nature. When he talks about maintenance of water, wastewater systems, this is the annual maintenance, so we have a fair amount of work that we're upgrading, keep. Parts buildings, road sidewalks, that's the standard. We need to be filling potholes, we need to be repairing and replacing sidewalks that are healing or cracking, things of that nature. So the work sort of being referred to there are predominantly just the, the annual ongoing. Once the MAM survey is done, survey advised counsel, and let you know what the next step is, and keep you posted all along.
Thank you. Counselor Ackerman, do you have any more questions before?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Ackerman?
My question was already asked, so.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Is there any further questions? If there's not, I can find my little thing about the motion. Would like, is anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, sure. I think that the Director of Operations report has presented.
Excellent. Any discussion? If there's no question, all in favor? That's carried. All right, so next on the agenda here is our closed session. And so I would like to request a motion to go to closed session at six forty-five PM.
Okay, I'm going to go to closed session at six forty-five PM.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Okay, there's the motion to move on a closed session and the closed session conference.
Yes.
And do you have sound counsel arguments?
Is your mate is not ready?
Yeah, yes sir.
You have sound, okay, thank you.
Okay, so can I get a motion to move on a closed session at age thirty one?
I move that the council move on a closed session at age thirty one.
Um, any discussion? Question, all in favor?
That's carried.
And then can I get a motion about the closed session? Okay.
I move that council direct that the closed meeting discussions with respect to A, land matter nine three zero three, Range Zero two two three, and B, communication strategy, C, strategic plan or plan, and D, personnel matter, ring confidential pursuant to section twenty four one A, advice from officials in section twenty four one E, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act, protection of privacy, actually.
Thank you. Any discussion? Say none, call question, all in favor. That's carried. And then finally, can we get a motion to adjourn at eight three two PM?
I do adjourn at eight three two PM.
Any discussion? Say none, call question, all in favor. That's carried.